So our meeting is called to order at 8:01. And we'll pause to welcome Lois Derry when she joins us. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So next is attendance. Irene, can you do roll call attendance, please?
I will. Genevieve Chen.
Present.
Eldon Swanson.
Present.
Steve DoMeyer.
Here.
Lois Derry. Not here. Dr. Molno, Vice Chair.
Here.
Dr. Liz Hollins with Chair.
Here. Thank you.
We have a core.
Thank you. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at City Hall, the library, and the rec department. And it's also posted on the city's website. Public comment is allowed by the Brown Act. Irene, have you received any public comment?
I have not.
Are there anybody, is there anybody in the waiting room on Zoom to comment?
Oh, Lois Derry is in the waiting room.
Hey. Lois?
Morning, Lois.
Good morning, Lois. Let the minutes show that Lois joined us. And let's go ahead and take a look at our first agenda item, approval of the minutes from the January 25th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that the minutes be approved.
Thank you, Eldon. Is there a second?
Second.
Lois, seconds. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Liz?
Yes.
According to the new Zoom rules, I have to ask each person their vote.
Oh, you want to do a roll call? Okay, all those in favor.
I'll say.
You started. You started.
Genevieve? What did you vote? You approve? Eldon Swanson?
Yes.
Steve DoMeyer?
Aye.
Lois Derry?
She said, yes, Lois, you're muted.
In Zoom land.
At the bottom of the screen on the left, when you put your cursor over, there should be a little microphone.
How do you vote, Lois? Yay or nay?
Yes.
Dr. Molno?
Right.
And Liz?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Let's go on to the Board of Trustees' report. And my report, I have been following up on the Susie Crowell project. It's not as easy to take the pictures with the right resolution and get them enlarged. So it's a work in progress. I also want to report that on our Board of Trustees' meeting calendar, it shows a March 10th meeting with the City Council. But that meeting has been canceled. The City Council has found that it's just too difficult in a Zoom environment to really have a lot of constructive opportunities. I think we're okay, though, because we have the mayor at our meetings. And so City Council knows what's going on with the library. The city clerk and the city attorney, as Irene mentioned, because of the virtual nature of meetings, they've asked all boards and commissions to conduct votes by roll call, not a general aye or nay. And this is going to apply to even our file and receive actions this morning. And so Irene, you already will keep us on target for that, okay? I've also met a couple times with staff. And we met on our budget committee that you'll hear about later, and also to prepare today's agenda. And one of the things that came up was, we talked about last, the January meeting being a very long agenda. And that we had so many things to go through that the trustees didn't give a lot of feedback to staff at our January meeting. And we really, we talked about that staff really would like our reaction and response to the various program plans, their suggestions, their ideas. As a board, we have our charge, our mission as board members, but we also represent the public. And so that helps the staff just kind of get a smattering of opinions from the public. We have Rebecca and Tara here, and I think Jeff may be joining us. So during the report in a minute, let's not only give them the heartily deserved kudos that they deserve, but let's give them any suggestions or ideas or questions. We have fewer items and more opportunity to give them input today. Let's go on with our trustees' reports. Eldon, do you have anything to report?
No, I don't.
Lois, any report? Linda Molno?
I'll report during the Crane Art Gallery.
Okay. Genevieve? You're muted.
Sorry. I think you have covered our liaison meeting, so no.
And Steve?
My report I'll contain in the marketing publicity portion.
Okay. The City Council Liaison Report. Mayor Udi, do you have anything you'd like to share as our City Council Liaison?
No, nothing specifically. We're just now starting to approach the budgeting season, so that'll be always on.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Crane Art Gallery Report. Linda?
I really don't have anything new. I just wanted to remind the board that we now have the Marion Fortunati exhibit up. It's virtual. There is a link to her website on the library website. I was pleased to see there is a little bit more publicity this time. As I reported at our last meeting, sales are pretty dismal for the virtual exhibits. But it gives us, still, we have at least a toe in the door, if not our whole foot, as far as getting these, getting, getting the art out to the public the way that we want. We are definitely looking forward, though, to the real thing once the library opens again. And that's, that's all.
Thank you. I noticed that publicity, too, and it looks like fabulous pieces of art. The Marketing and Publicity Liaison Report. Steve?
We had a terrific meeting on February 16th. Irene, Brian and I, gosh, it was over an hour and 15 minutes long. We went through a lot of, a lot of material. We wanted to address the fact that Denise Dobbs is no longer involved in the library and was kind of a generator of a lot of publicity there. But we were exploring different ways to get the message out there still. And talked about the various, I mean, Brian had a list of things that we were going over in terms of projects to, to publicize. And as you mentioned, the previous one. Also, just taking advantage of every little opportunity we can to advertise the library. There is a auto-generated email that goes out from the library. And adding extra publicity text to that is something that Irene and her team is working on. And then posters in Lacy Park featuring five books with a QR code on there. That's something that's in the works as well. There was just, gosh, there was just a bunch of things that we were talking about, letting, getting the message out that the library books are due. There was an email that, that Irene put out about that, which I was, I was happy to assist her with, trying to get the message out that, you know, now things are starting to get back to normal. And so it's just kind of an ongoing issue. Also, Liz, you had mentioned about getting us into the Valentine newsletter, since we're already in the Carver one. And so there was, there's, I gave Marissa Kelly's name to Brian, and he's having someone on his staff liaise with her to make sure that they're getting that information as well. And I, I've got to say, I mean, I'm very busy liking on Facebook all of the stuff that Tara and the, and the gang are doing with Rebecca, because they're creating a lot of great content. And I would encourage all of you, if you're on Facebook, to, to do that as well. To, you know, the more we like it, the more it shows up on the algorithm and the more publicity gets out there. So thumbs up, people. Get those thumbs up.
Thank you. Any comments or suggestions for the marketing and publicity? Thank you, Steve. Thank you to your team. Budget and CIP, I have a little bit of a report. Genevieve, may I start? You're muted. Okay.
Yes, please.
So Genevieve and I are the Budget and CIP liaisons. And we had our fourth meeting with staff for the fiscal year. And we always begin by discussing revenue. And Robert updated us on the donations, because that's basically the only changing of revenue at this time. And it's not a pretty picture. He shared that along with Finance Director Chung, they will be looking at the library's reliance upon the Friends donation for such a large part of funding integral programs. Whether they'll make a change to that approach or how that'll be done, they'll be reporting back to us. Early in the pandemic, the board supported the very conservative spending plan shared by the staff. And then during this last Budget Committee meeting, we talked about community needs. And as the pandemic drags on, more programming is desired. Patrons using curbside service want current titles. We again discussed the significant decrease for revenue for children's services. And the board acted, remember, back in October, we released $5,000 for children's books. And now that'll be used also to support the summer reading program to get titles for that. We also discussed these restricted reserve funds beyond that $5,000. And the $5,000 is part of the spending plan for children's services that Robert is going to review. It's mentioned in his report that he'll share with us later. Genevieve, do you want to add anything?
Liz, I think you covered nicely. Yes, we are so concerned about our revenue due to the pandemic. Nobody expected this long of a duration that we couldn't open. Unrelated, can I just ask if the staff could be considered first or essential worker to get their vaccines?
Irene, are you considered an essential worker to get your vaccine?
Go ahead, Amanda.
I can answer that.
Thank you, Amanda.
Unfortunately, we're not. There's a few categories. And if you've seen and followed it, things keep changing. Right, Phase 1B is emergency workers and frontline workers. There was originally a Phase 1C, which included what they called essential government functions. But that's been eliminated to move towards more of an age-based approach. So things keep changing. You never know. And the timelines keep kind of moving back, moving up. So at this time, there's no prioritization for anyone who's not in our emergency response.
I really wish we could have the staff are being vaccinated so we could open our library and start some kind of a service. That would perhaps help our budget issue a little, give us a little relief on that. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Genevieve, do you know any doctors who would bring them the vaccines?
I haven't gotten one. My mother hasn't gotten her second shot. And I heard there's a delay on the transport. Some people were canceled due to the weather. But there's good news. I heard Ralph's, the one on Garfield and Huntington, they are offering vaccine. I think it's Moderna. However, I haven't gone inside to ask. I heard San Bernardino County, Riverside County, if you go through Costco, they are able to have decent luck on booking an appointment. And the restriction is not as tight. LA County, it's a complete different animal. They redirect you to the county website, which we all know how difficult it is to navigate through the whole Count, LA County site. So if you're willing, although that's not the best option. But also, I heard Vons in Arcadia also having vaccine being offered. That's Moderna as well.
Well, it sounds like Amanda's on top of it for the library staff and all of the city workers and keeping everybody informed. I saw the chief in Contra, and he had just gotten his second shot. I know he's way too young, so he's, anyway. He is definitely essential, and we think our library staff is, too. Thank you. Let's go on to our director and city librarian, oh, excuse me, Linda, I didn't see you.
A question. Do, do you have a plan for reopening the library and what that looks like?
Yes.
Brian?
Good morning, everybody. There is no plan right now to reopen the library. A lot of it is based on what's going on with the state and the definition of retail. Unfortunately, the state had lumped library operations into an overall retail category. And that doesn't work for library operations for a bunch of different reasons. So right now, the California Live, California State Library, which is the professional organization for all public libraries in the state, they are lobbying to fix that. So we won't have any idea of when to open the library, how that will look until probably, I would say, late May. There's just a lot of what-ifs. And right now with, when, when we're talking to other librarians in the area and statewide, there's, the protocols that are out there right now were based on early part of the pandemic, not the realities of the current pandemic. So a lot of those logistics and requirements have changed. But we will, we're definitely keeping our, our eyes to the, the matter. And we should have sort of more to report out in the next few months. But Irene is staying on top of it, especially with her discussions with librarians across the state.
Thank you. Because I mean, the real question is, do you, when you get the green light, do you know what it looks like for you? Because I, I kind of chuckle with the rollout of the vaccine. The government's had nine months to think about it, and they did not do a very good job. So, you know, we, too, have had nine months to think about this. So it'd be nice to know what the checklist looks like in some of those protocols.
We did develop a protocol for reopening, Ken, last April. So that's still its extent. But it may, it may change, because it's, it's going to be a little safer and a little bit more open, I think.
Oh, yeah, I think this.
Eldon, go ahead.
Okay. Now, as, as the planning on this, I think it's going to keep moving out for a lot of different organizations, not just us. So we have to be careful and take a look at it. But the, by the way, I just mentioned COVID shots. If you know anyone or if you, and if you are having a problem getting them or getting appointments, San Marino Community Church, just down the street, has a group that is very good at getting appointments for you. So you let, let, let people know that, and you talk to them. And if you need it, you should do that, too. But I, I definitely think that, that we need to be get, get, be careful about our planning, but also make sure that we stay in touch with the San Marino Tribune or something. So we can, when we do plan to open, we get that news. It hits the, the city quickly. And I think that the best.
Big news last, this month, is that the books are due again. And we've been getting a very good reaction from that. As Jeff can tell you, the, the book drops are overflowing all weekend. So it's, people are bringing their books back. So that's, that's a step towards, I'll say, right there.
And back a couple months ago, the LA County sent a list of steps to prepare for the library reopening. Put hand sanitizer here. Put a plastic divider here. Those kinds of real specific things to do. Capacity seating, not, no seating, and those kinds of things that our library staff has been looking at. Dr. Molno, I'm sorry. I think you had your hand up.
That's okay. I, I understand. All of this is really quite, quite important. I just, before I get to the quest, the comment that I had, I just wanted to say that the LA County site is not as bad as people are saying it is. It's just a matter of persistence. My husband and I have had both of our shots. We went through the county. We got to go and have our second shot when all the LA city sites were shut down, because the county still was working. And they are incredibly efficient once you get there. I mean, it was, it, it is, it, it was really a sight to see. I, I, you know, just getting the appointment was the hardest part. But it was, the county does have an email list you can sign up for, where they will send you reminders. And it's just being persistent. I, what I did in the beginning was I left a tab open on my computer. Every time I went on my computer, I just checked to see if there was any, if they were taking appointments, and we got in. So we're now 95% okay, according to the experts. And that leads to the comment I was going to make. And I understand the importance of getting the Friends bookshop back up and running as far as our budget is concerned, how, how much we depend on the funds from them. And what I'm wondering is, is there anything that we can do to help the Friends? I mean, they help us so much with money. Is there anything that we can do? And I, I do realize that many of them are in similar, a similar age group to myself, where they, they have been able to, I wanted, that I know for sure, that has been able to get both shots. But I mean, I, you know, personally, I would be willing to, you know, go in on occasion temporarily to help out, if that's what it takes, if it just takes a, a few of us that feel comfortable now being out.
Lois, and then Brian. Lois?
No, I would feel comfortable helping in the bookshop.
Brian?
Yes, just getting right back to the mayor's comment. The other thing is that we are continuing to monitor the county's website on library reopenings. And unfortunately, they haven't provided any guidance either. I still believe that they're waiting for this state directive to come forward. And then the county would develop more specific operating protocols for libraries. As for the Friends of the Library, I know that in our Director and City Librarians' report, we talked about doing an outdoor library possibly in May, just to start getting the word out. That could be an opportunity to do maybe an outdoor book sale for the Friends of the Library. If we were to do any sales within the actual retail store, shop, whatever, however we want to classify that, we could probably only get one person in at a time. Just the way that restrictions are right now with how many people can be in a room, it's just not very feasible. But we could possibly look at an outdoor book sale, if that's something that the Board of Trustees wishes to do.
If the Friends would be willing to do that, and we could help recruit some help and even maybe get some muscle help to drag those books out. I think that is more to the point about the book sale is that it really was a physical labor job to schlep the books. And that, that really was beyond the Friends. So if, if that was an opportunity and if we had some clear guidance on the volunteers, like Linda was saying, do they have to be our vaccinated volunteers? We have a whole football team of Titans that would be great to bring over to schlep the boxes. And if they're sophomores or juniors, they need the community service hours, and they'd be willing to help. So we would need some guidance on what the library or the city felt comfortable with in terms of bringing volunteers back on the sites.
Yeah. And, and unfortunately, I don't have a answer for you, but we can definitely look into that. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, let's get back to item Board of Trustee Report number seven, San Marino Center renovation and update. Steve and Ken?
I, I hope, I hope everyone is paying attention to the background behind the mayor, because he's got a wonderful rendering of what, he's getting it out of the way kindly. Of, this is what the approach could look like, will probably look like. Coming from the south side, you see the library on the right. And if you can see the, where the tree is, there's a little banner, a signage there showing which way to go. You go to the right for the library and the left for the San Marino Center. The task force has met a couple more times, I think, since we last spoke. And as always, working diligently and, and fine tuning things left and right. And it's, it's really, I, I, I keep saying it every time, but it's very gratifying to be part of this group who's doing such great work and, and very diligently applying themselves to make this thing happen. So the, the architects continue to refine and make changes to the renderings to make sure it looks, so it's adequate for what the public is going to see. Because, you know, even, even, you know, the trees and that kind of stuff, we, the other rendering had trees much smaller than that. It's like, well, what's it going to really look like? So we're, we're continuing to move forward to make sure that when these renderings are shown to the public, you go, oh, yes, I see what, this is what it's going to look like. And I think, I think it's really nice that we're moving forward with this. Mr. Mayor, do you want to add anything?
No, I, too, am pleased it's moving forward. I think it was a great idea to make it in this San Marino Center look like the library. And I think it was a great idea to open up the, the wall in between the two and make a campus-type feel. They've added a couple of outdoor patio areas. So I think the, the utilization of the space in that campus feel should be outstanding.
Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a start date on the construction?
I think it's later in the, like, third or fourth quarter, Eldon. And I, it's going to be about two years till it's done. I think I kind of remember August is kind of when the final plans will be done. So, so then they'll put, put shovels in the ground, probably fourth quarter, and off it goes.
Okay.
Our last meeting, we were looking at possible finishes. You know, what kind of carpeting and what kind of flooring and wall and all that kind of stuff. And, and I was advocating for us to, to look at it in, in the space, because I'm a man of limited imagination. So I got to see it in the space to go, what's it going to look like up on the wall there? So I, I think we'll be doing that at some point.
Thank you, Steve and Ken. Let's go on to the Director and City Librarians' report. Irene and Brian?
Want to start, Brian?
Sure. Good morning, everybody. Just a couple things to, to note in this month's report. Just on Friday, we hired a copywriter and editor to help us with some of the PR for the library. This was done in lieu of Denise Dobbs, who's no longer with us. And she did have a large part in our publicity. So we'll be using those folks on an as-needed basis. This week, we'll be working on getting out a news release on the upcoming Slav Ken lecture. And then we'll also be getting an e-blast out about your library's open and here's how you use library pickup service or curbside service. The other thing is, in order to continue publicity, we're starting to do in-person programming, at least on the recreation side. So this makes sense to republish the recreation guide. However, we're changing its frequency. Instead of going on a quarterly basis, we'll be doing it bimonthly. I think what that does is that it helps keep recreation and library programs on top of mind. It also allows us to be nimble. That way, we're not having to schedule out three or four months in advance, primarily because it's still hard to do programming in a COVID environment. But I also feel like when you get the, this new guide, it's not going to be bulky with all this information. It just tells you, here's what you need to know for the next two months, and here's what your library and recreation services are offering. We do have a list of programs provided, I believe, as attachment three to the report. That was our internal copy. We're still finalizing dates and everything for that. But as you'll see, we're going in a pretty strong direction. And then, beginning in May, we're looking to start to do more outdoor programming. Of course, it would be on a limited basis. And it's with public health guidelines. But again, our goal is to get the word out and make people know that the library is still here. We'll probably be looking at events, the courtyard, or possibly at Lacy Park. And in all of that vein, we're looking to do this year's Summer Reading Club there at the park, since a lot of other cities are, are figuring out that that's probably a good model to approach. Finally, CIPs, they're moving forward. Many thanks to Library and Fundly for working on getting bids for the window tending process project. And then we recently met regarding the BART AV improvements. We're looking to do that as a phase project. And then we recently met regarding the BART AV improvements. We're looking to do that as a phased project. We're getting some cost figures out, but we'll have more to share at the next board meeting. So with that being said, I know librarian McDermott has a lot to report, and then also we have Rebecca, Tara and Jeff here to talk a little bit more about their programming, what's working, what's not working. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I, I do want to point out that the Friends online book sale is still going on, and in January, they made ninety-seven dollars. Which, if you consider that it's over the web and that they've never done it before, is pretty darn good, I would say. I wanted to talk about spending on books. As you know, we've been conservative on spending, but we have got some, since the beginning of the fiscal year in July, we've purchased over sixteen hundred adult books, three hundred sixty-seven children's books and seventy-three young adult books. So ordering is continuing, processing, new books getting out. Librarian Plumley has been our point man for improvements in the library, physical improvements, and he's been doing the tinting. Is there anything you'd like to report on that?
Yes, the, I have two, I have the two contractors for the window tinting. And that's ongoing. I expect probably another two or three this week. We've had some lighting issues, which I've been working with Public Works on those, and I expect to be working with an electrician fairly soon on that. Also, we've got some work for the tiles in the lobby, main lobby. Those have been an ongoing problem for some time, but we're working to resolve that issue as well. So we're moving forward.
Can you comment on the flagpole, Jeff? The lighting of the flagpole?
Yes, that's part of the electrician, as I was mentioning to you. What I'm hoping is that we can eliminate the flag from an existing pole that's already there.
That's great.
And the foundation, Matt, and they got a lot of entries for their bookmark contest, so those awards will be going out. They also have raised money. They raised about fifty-four hundred dollars last month from a, from a newsletter. So that's pretty great. So all things considered, we're doing okay. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. On attachment one, under the operations, you talked about you've been talking about the books returning, and now that we're going to be charging fines. Can you talk about the dates of those fines and how you're going to notify the public?
Well, we've sent out emails. I mean, the emails say the books are due on the twenty-eighth of February or after. We have, we've talked to Finance Director Chung, who has given us permission to just on the down low, not charge fines in March. So then we'll, we'll restart charging fines in April.
So the email just goes to people who have books out?
We have also put information in the newspaper and on our website. Yes.
And then on another, on another topic, and maybe this is Rebecca. It's so exciting. The foundation gave that money for additional titles on Overdrive, and I use Libby a lot. And when can we expect to see some new titles? And are they going to be like exciting bestseller titles, or are they going to be, I don't know, C-tier titles?
So, um, our Overdrive offerings are kind of interesting. As you probably know, we're part of a consortium, SCLC. And so the titles that we would be getting are for the Overdrive Advantage, which means the preference and priority goes to Crowell Public Library users specifically. The problem with buying titles under Advantage is that the user can't search for those titles specifically. It's only serendipitous that you find it and you realize you're able to check it out, or that you're higher on a holds list. So keeping that in mind, we're trying to strategize what would be the best types of titles to get. We thought long-term classics would be best. But you do raise a point that you're looking for those brand-new, fresh-hot titles.
The Vanishing Half.
Okay, we have specific ones. All right, I'll write that down. But yeah, that's, we're, we're strategizing right now to figure out what would be best. Just the fact that you can't search for them specifically, we want to make sure we get titles that will be used, if that makes sense.
Does Overdrive let you see the users?
How so?
Like, do you have some sort of an administrative dashboard that lets you see that sixty-eight people have checked out a title?
It does, yeah.
And does it let you see that Liz Hollingsworth is reading?
I don't know if it goes as granular to the specific user type. I'll have to play around with the dashboard some more, but I do know it shows you our users and what titles are being, like, it'll show you the, the titles most checked out.
So there's nothing in there that lets you see who you should be notifying of new titles, the, you, you know, the people using Overdrive?
That's a good idea. I could look into that, like, to find out who our frequent users are, so that way we can let them know what was recently purchased through Overdrive Advantage?
If that's a possibility, that would be very cool. But I think it also getting some of the new titles and publicizing that in some way would also draw more people toward using the eBooks.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And then maybe we could even...
I love the eBooks. I read Danny and the Dinosaur to my grandson in Boston. Thank you very much.
That is so cute. Okay, so yeah, I'll definitely look into that and see better ways to notify of these books because I think you're right. I think it would be a good idea to get the hotter titles. And then maybe we could even publicize them through the Lacy Park efforts that we're doing. So that would be a, maybe a good tie-in too. But I'll be thinking of that. Thank you.
Rebecca, and, and if, if there isn't a way through Overdrive, perhaps you could be engineered the other way, where you send out an email to library patrons, invited them to say, hey, do you use Overdrive? If so, sign up and we'll let you know of the titles we add. So it's kind of an opt-in thing.
That's a good idea.
It might be, it might, it might save you some work.
Ask for some input on titles of interest.
And obviously put Liz and me on that list since we use Overdrive. So you can just start with us.
Make sure you're there. Okay, got it.
Thank you. I have a question about the quarterly work plan. And you have, you've really made great strides in the e-library cards this year. And I'm wondering, what month is traditionally the get-your-library card month?
That's September, but I, I talked to Lipla this week and I've got some unfortunate news. There's no way to have people automatically sign up for a library card. You can't do it yourself over the web. So I thought that there had been, but apparently she said, no, there never has been. So while we have this, this ILS, this system, we won't be able to have people sign up by themselves, unfortunately.
So you're going to get another way that people can sign up for a library card, even though the library might be physically closed?
Yes.
A question, Liz. Was September chosen as library card month because that's when students used to go back to school?
This is an American Library Association celebration.
I know, but, but tied in with that, you know, going back to school, since we're going back in August now, I wonder if maybe the city of San Marino could have their own date. And maybe have a table set up outside that people could come and...
Yeah, we could do that, definitely. Definitely.
And something with the schools, of course. Get those little TKers. And they're going to school today.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it's so exciting. Okay. On the, I want to talk about this, these two lists. Boy, this is awesome. And I don't know if everybody has gotten this email to them of all these community services programs. Lois, had you seen this list before we got it in our packets? Eldon, had you seen it? No. So we got to get this in front of more people because it's really complete. And I also found out that Brian does it on the weekends. Thank you, Brian. And I have one comment at the very tippy top by the ox. And you also have the Crowell logo and the city logo. One comment that I had, and it really stood out more when I looked at this list of all of the yellow being library and the blue being the, did I have that right? Led by rec programs. And they're all combined, but not identified as library or as rec. And to me, that's important. I don't know how the other board members feel, but one idea was, you know, these little Facebook and Twitter icons? Could you put the little icon next to the event? For instance, recess at Lacy Park, you'd have a little rec department icon next to it. The Betty Crocker thing, is that what I'm showing? No, the Lunar New Year craft, you'd have a little Crowell icon next to it. Just a thought of a way to show the difference, what's being offered by the library and what's being offered by the rec department. It's exciting that Dr. Hal Slavkin is coming. Eldon, are you going to go to that one?
Yes.
And you've heard him speak before?
When is it coming up?
It's March thirteenth, it's Monday. At three o'clock in the afternoon. Thirteenth, I'm sorry, March fifteenth.
This is a new topic, Irene?
This is, the topic is COVID and vaccines and evolution of the human immune system. I mean, he's, he's, he's a very comprehensive and intelligent guy, so I can't wait to hear him.
And we already have twenty-eight signups.
Tara, do you have any success stories or anything that you would like to share with us this morning while we're on the librarian report?
Oh, yeah, definitely. And we've been very busy with programming this new calendar year. I'm glad you mentioned the Lunar New Year craft. We have started a new partnership with National Charity League, where I have the TikTokers preparing the craft for me, and with that, we've been able to provide way more than we normally would. When we have library staff doing it, normally we could do twenty or thirty or so with just the skeleton crew that we have right now. But when we have several classes of TikTokers all eager for volunteer hours, they were able to give me a hundred crafts. So we had ninety-five children sign up for the Lunar New Year craft, and we got some really cute photos from parents. They were really happy about that. So we're planning to make monthly take and makes activities for children a regular offering this year. That was good. Let's see, we had a great bingo program over Zoom with kids in January, nineteen participants, and we're just making lots and lots of more programming plans for this year. And this week, I'm actually doing a teddy bear sleepover with paper doll teddy bears. So I had kids register to receive a paper doll teddy bear. They're going to decorate it, return it to me, and then this Thursday night, we're going to have shenanigans with the library. I'll take photos, and the next day, the kids will get to see what their teddy bears were up to.
That's darling. And that's, you've done the teddy bear sleepover before.
Yes, traditionally, it was a stuffed animal sleepover, so we tweaked it this, this time with paper dolls instead of stuffed animals.
I think you're doing a great job pivoting during COVID.
Great, thank you. I'm excited. It'll be fun.
Rebecca, you should report out on your fabulous red car program.
So we have this great, I'm, I'm starting a new series called Remember When? And the premise is kind of storytime for adults, where we sit around and we talk about a shared topic, a shared experience, and remember it together. And the first one was the red car. And so I reached out to different community members, and I was fortunate enough to have, how many people? I had nine people at the first one. A lot of people were just kind of quietly interested. They stayed on mute, but that was okay because we had...
Sorry, that's my bad.
No worries. So anyhoo, it was a great success. We had a ton of people that were there and invested and interested, and I think we're going to offer this quarterly. So the next Remember When, I don't have a, a topic a hundred percent decided, but we were thinking the Rose Parade. Because I know a lot of people in this community have very fond memories of the Rose Parade, and, and I imagine would love to share those as well. So it was great. And if you would like to hear more about my programs, we're continuing doing a lecture series. As you noticed, we have Hal Slavkin, which we already talked about. The Betty Crocker one is happening tomorrow. I did a little bit of targeted emailing, looking at old signups, emails, like registrations for programs past and emailing those people specifically to let them know what we have going on now. And it increased our signups from nineteen to like fifty-two people. So I am really excited about that. Other than lectures, we have our take and makes for adults. In March, we're doing glass etching, which I'm really excited about. So it's like a beer stein, and then you can etch a design onto it, you know, in celebration of St. Patrick's Day. And then we also have trivia coming up too. And we're going to continue offering trivia on a monthly basis, and I might be forgetting something, but that's most of what we have going on right now. Oh, I think we're all muted still.
I'm sorry, I asked all to unmute. There we go.
I'm not sure how to unmute people.
Eldon, do you have any questions or comments for our library staff on programs?
No, I don't.
Genevieve? You're muted?
No, I don't.
Linda?
Oh, I would just like to thank Rebecca for the library club, or the book club, the Crowell Book Club. I missed, I, I missed the one this week. Something came up, but I attended the one last month and small group. But it was fun, and I think it's a good idea. I find myself reading an awful lot more these days than I managed to get in, in the pre-COVID days. So belonging to several book clubs is not a bad idea.
Thank you. I definitely find that too. It's, everyone that's in there mentions that this is one of many they're a part of, and that they need the books, you know, to keep them going through the pandemic. So it's a good time for this, for sure.
Steve, any questions or comments?
No questions, just a comment though. I, I wanted to say that while I, I really prefer in-person meetings, this Zoom format does allow for a lot more people to join us with the meeting, and I think it's fantastic that it's not just Brian or, or Irene that's with us, but that we've got Tara and Rebecca here, and so we can get their input directly. It's, I think it's very helpful and it's nice having Mary here as well. So good, good job with the programs.
Thank you.
Liz, I just have one more, I have one more question. And this, this goes back to the Summer Reading Club for children. There was in January, a book club, and I'm trying to remember, it wasn't, not a book club, but a reading club where we were recording how many hours we read and such, and adults could do it, and children could do it. And I thought that was, that was kind of interesting, and maybe another way if, and I don't know if that was generated from San Marino or from another site. It seemed to me it was connected with a publisher. But that seemed like a good way to, to maybe bring different generations. But that seemed like a good way to, to maybe bring different generations together in, in one project.
I could take that one. So yes, the program was called Beanstalk and it was, we did a winter reading club, which is the, this is, it's an online summer reading club software that we were gifted through this, the, the State Library Association. And the awesome thing about it is that we have a three-year subscription. So they have a lot of different templates. So some, some libraries do monthly reading clubs, some libraries do fall reading clubs. We decided to start small with the summer and then do the winter, but that's definitely a great idea to keep, if you, if you feel there's an interest in that, we could definitely keep it going. Right, right now, we're making plans for the summer reading club. And yes, it was, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say Tara, thank you for your help in, in guiding me through that and my participation with it because I got a little lost. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Let's go on to our next agenda item, the management analyst report from Robert.
Morning, everyone. It's the report they all look forward to.
Robert, wait, I think I just forgot something. Excuse me. I think we're supposed to receive and file the director and librarians' report with a roll call motion. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, may I please have a motion that the board receive and file the community services director and city librarians' report?
So moved.
Linda said so moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Steve says a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Irene?
Genevieve Chen. Yes?
Yes or no? Yes.
Eldon Swanson.
Yes.
Steve Dohmeyer.
Yes.
Trustee Derry.
She signed off.
Uh, Dr. Momo, vice chair.
Yes.
Liz Hollingsworth, chair.
Yes. Robert, I apologize. Please go ahead.
Sure. So on my report, everyone, there's not a significant development happening at least through January. Just to give you an update based on my projections and looking at past year historicals, I'm expecting that the library will use up all the funding for contract services, children's books, obviously, electronic resources and memberships induced, as well as, interestingly, electricity. Even though the library is closed to the public, we do have city hall staff utilizing spaces in the library, so electricity saving most likely will not happen this year. However, we are seeing a little bit of savings for the other utilities for the library. Overall, adult services still remains largely well-funded. Book buying has pretty much been good. Real element that's been impacted is programming. That's because that resides in donations. Children's services, of course, as we know, is our main concern. So we're still trying to figure out how to expand the funding in that area. We've already released restricted donations. We've also received additional donations. We also received the gift from Lois Derry in February, so that will be reflected at the next meeting's budget monitor. The other last item was because we had part-time employees leave at the end of December, I did have the data from January to kind of do a very rough estimate of the projections. So based on my figures, I previously reported that the library was going to probably spend about 83.3% of its general fund monies. That's been revised to say 80.8% by the end of the year. In regards to CIP projects, Brian touched on a little bit. We did meet with Parks and Public Works to see what upgrades can be done for the bathroom for the 19,500 budget that we got this year. By the sounds of it, it's looking like it's going to be mostly just the presentation elements, so the projector. In regards to the audio elements, that'll probably be the second phase of the project when we bring that back to council. In regards to fiscal year 21, 22, right now, the only CIP projects that were taken or submitted were the Thornton Conference Room Display and the security camera upgrade. That's what we have at this moment. Like librarian Plumley mentioned, there is potential for additional projects. I am still reviewing those with Parks and Public Works Director as well as Brian. And let's see, and as also our mayor had mentioned, budget season is around the corner, so if I believe correctly, check my calendars. Next week, I will be meeting with library staff and recreation staff to begin the preliminary budget development process. I've gotten some information from the librarians in regards to what they would like to see in the budget for next year. So I'm working around that, trying to incorporate going away from the reliance on the restricted donations. I want to have a little bit more reliance, reliable funding from the general fund. We'll see how that goes. And then at this time, I'm projecting to bring forward the library budget at next month's meeting. And I have, if you have any questions.
Robert, what has been the typical year not COVID contribution from the friends?
$50,000.
Yeah.
At least.
So we're looking at maybe reducing the overall revenue forecast by that, and then if the friends come through with a donation, do you have, you're looking at another plan for other kinds of things that could be used for? Or at our, you know, if you get a mid-year donation, would you add programs? Would you buy more books? I mean, what would that look like?
If we were to receive a donation, did not project, that would be a conversation I would have to have with the librarians, depending on what the donation entails. So there are some folks who give donations and they say specifically for Chinese books. We can only spend it on Chinese books, but like with some of the previous donations, it's just been, like, I think with the McFarlane donation, it was just $5,000 and we were able to say, and it was ambiguous, so we were able to say some for books and some for programs. So for donations, it really depends on what the donor specifies.
I, I think even as we gradually emerge from COVID into the post-COVID world, it's going to be really hard to forecast the success of the Friends program. As Brian was saying, if you could only have one or two buyers in the shop, that's a, you know, and, and who knows if people are going to want to come and buy books when, if they have become accustomed to eBooks or getting it from Amazon tomorrow. So that's going to be a hard forecast. Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, and it's, what we're finding is it's actually easier to quote unquote, say we're expecting no donations, and then if we happen to receive one, we just go to council and amend the budget. We're finding that that seems to be a little bit more stable and just say, we're going to put more reliance on the general fund. If we happen to get a donation, great, wonderful, we'll amend the budget and we'll figure out what to do with it.
Robert, you, do you want to comment on the donations monitor at all?
No, you will notice that it's been, the budget monitor and the donation monitor were flipped around, so revenues are at the top now. But other than that, I don't. Nothing else really stands out.
And then on the statistics report, did you want to highlight anything?
No, libraries' movements have been relatively steady. I think it was noted in the director and librarians' report that young adult circulation had an interesting little spike in regards to materials, but other than that, everything else has been relatively uneventful.
And then we did get this new multi-page statistics, including the graphs in our packets, and I'm wondering if we have any trustee feedback for Robert, if this was more helpful? Or if we're kind of just getting used to the statistics being presented in this new format? Any comments or questions about the statistics or about the new format?
I think it looks great, Robert. It gives a quick glance on the trending. I have a concern for the future, I mean, the coming year budget. What is the direction that we're going to be following? Because certainly I don't think we're going to be budgeting like the pre-COVID. Is there any guideline from the city council? How are we going to go for the next year? I mean, that's probably my biggest concern. How are we going to budget for the next year?
No, I don't think there's any direction today, you know, and Robert, thank you for the new format and for adding the, you know, the financial impact, doing, doing the math, a revenue minus expenses equals a financial impact. And I think with, you know, revenue being down so hard this year with the library that we need to be prudent with the expenses and buying lots of new titles when people can't come into the library. You know, it seems to me like that should just be, you know, postponed and tabled until we get back to a more normal environment and know what it looks like. But, you know, to, to comment on what next year's budget cycle is going to look like, I just, I just don't know. I bet we're going to hopefully forget a COVID world and kind of go back to business as usual.
I guess it's nine o'clock.
Yes, it is.
My cuckoo clock from 1969.
Oh my gosh. Ken, I just, I want to respectfully disagree with you on, on the need for adding titles. I think we're trying to keep interest up, keep curbside service up. If we have librarians working, we want to provide services to the members of the community. I personally have a concern that we're losing patrons and we've got to continue to have hooks to draw them back when the time is right for really opening the doors. So that's just my opinion, which is different from yours.
Can I jump in on that too also? Because I think that from a marketing publicity standpoint, we talk about curbside pickup, but I don't know if there's a great awareness overall in the community that the library is still open and functioning. You can't physically go in there, but you can still order books and, and have them picked up curbside, just like you would groceries or anything else. So I think that's something we need to keep reiterating because you, if you've got a recent book and you're interested in it and it's at the library, you can read it.
I thought it was interesting that you've been giving out so many tax forms. And I, for one, would, I'd personally be getting them off the internet, but that is a need for our community. So I think that's great that you've been doing that too. So more things are going out curbside than just the books. Lois?
I think too, even though I read all the time and I've read a lot on Kindle and everything else during this last year, but I still can't get back to, I want to get back to reading more books, books in hand. I don't think we're ever going to lose that. And it's still a whole different experience than, you know, the Kindle. So we've got to keep, keep our titles up and keep our books up.
Thank you, Lois, and thank you for your you, your donation. It really shows your commitment. Thank you so much.
Call them dairy books. Dairy books.
Her library, yes, she does. I think we're still on the management analyst report. Any other questions for Robert? Let's go on. Any written communications or public writings distributed will be at the library. Any public comments, Irene, in the waiting room?
No.
Liz?
Yes?
Do, do we need to vote on receiving?
Thank you, thank you.
Report.
May I please have a motion that the board receive and file the management analyst report?
So moved.
Linda moves. Is there a second?
Aye.
Genevieve, all those in, a roll call vote, please, Irene?
Genevieve Chen.
Aye.
Eldon Swanson.
Yes.
Steve Dohmeyer.
Yes.
Lois Derry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Momo.
Yes.
Chair Hollingsworth.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, are there any public comments waiting in the wings?
No.
Okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting at 9:06 a.m. So we've been just a little over an hour. And we will adjourn this meeting and then meet again March 22nd. We will not be meeting with the city council on March 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and it's really nice to see your faces. And I really miss seeing everybody at the Thornton Room. So we are, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.